Good evening. Today is Tuesday, April 1st. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Heather, would you please take role?
Councilmember Raditz.
Here.
Mayor Sullivan.
Here.
Councilmember Keck.
Here.
Councilmember Grabowski.
Here.
Councilmember Rosga.
Here.
City manager.
Here.
Finance director.
Here.
Community development director.
Here.
City engineer.
Here.
Role call complete.
Thank you. Public hearing. Citizens comment on agenda-related items. Any citizens with correspondence to be distributed to council should provide items to city clerk prior to the start of the meeting or after the meeting has adjourned, limited to five minutes.
Hi, council. My name is Dylan Walker, 247 East Cot Road, out in Manistee Township. I'm here tonight on behalf of the Shoreline Cycling Club. On your agenda tonight, you have a decision to approve our application to the Manistee County Community Foundation for a new grooming snowmobile and a shed out at the non-motorized trail park. I'm just going to go ahead and read for you the narrative to our grant application, and I'll be available here for questions if you should have them while you're deciding. The Shoreline Cycling Club has an ongoing agreement with the City of Manistee to maintain and groom cross-country ski trails at the non-motorized trail park. That's located on M-55 east of Manistee, out by the prison, if you're not familiar with it. The club has a snowmobile that has reached the end of its useful life. The snowmobile is a purpose-built utility sled that is capable of pulling heavy equipment. These snowmobiles are commonly used by cross-country skiing operations for grooming. Non-motorized trail park is conveniently located close to town. It's a beginner-friendly trail for skiing. And finally, the ski trails are groomed for skate skiing, which is unique compared to Big M, where they also have cross-country skiing. The club has a reliable pool of volunteers who are interested and dedicated to grooming using the existing equipment, but the reliability of the current sled is challenging and will eventually discourage our volunteer base. Part of this grant application is for a new grooming snowmobile to be purchased locally from Peacock and Baldwin. The other part is for a permanent storage shed that will allow the club to better care for the grooming equipment. Currently, the grooming equipment stays outside under a tarp. This makes it susceptible to weather exposure and damage from rodents. In the summer, the club relies on volunteers for storing equipment, which is unreliable, and the size of the equipment is also an unwelcome burden for our volunteers to transfer that and store that at their homes. On-site storage will allow less work for volunteers to care for the equipment. It will improve the security of our storage and will prolong the life of our equipment. The club intends to also store an existing trail mower, which was previously purchased with grant funding as well. My material starts on page 75 of your PDF. When you get to it, I prepared a presentation showing the equipment we operate, the snowmobile we would like to purchase, the shed we'd like to build. And the club has also raised $9,500, courtesy of private donors and businesses that will act as a cash match for this application. We're not asking for any cash from the city. I want to be very clear on that. We do have a pre-ranged agreement with the DPW and city management to help with site preparation for that shed. So if you have any questions, I'll be available. Thank you.
Thank you. Anything else? Consent agenda. All items marked with an asterisk are considered by the city manager to be routine matters. Prior to approval, any member of council may have an item removed and taken up during regular portion of the meeting. Items include approval of minutes, cash balances, revenue and expenses, balance sheet, consideration of ordinance Z-25-01 to amend Article 2, Section 206, entitled Definitions and Interpretations E of the zoning ordinance of the City of Manistee. Notifications regarding next study session, consideration of proclaiming April as Parkinson's Disease Awareness Month, consideration of music sparks meaning, Fourth of July Roots on the River kickoff event. At this time, council could take action to approve the consent agenda as presented. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
Heather, would you please take role?
Councilmember Raditz.
Yes.
Mayor Sullivan.
Yes.
Councilmember Keck.
Yes.
Councilmember Grabowski.
Yes.
Councilmember Rosga.
Yes.
Motion approved.
Consideration of a mooring agreement with Harbor Tours LLC. The Princess of Manistee, operated by Harbor Tours LLC, has requested a one-year mooring agreement with the City of Manistee. The agreement allows the vessel to dock along the Riverwalk and utilize a gangway to access the vessel. The seasonal rate would remain the same as 2024 at $6,063, and in exchange, the Princess will fuel at the city marina. At this time, council could take action to approve a mooring agreement with Harbor Tours LLC for the 2025 voting season and authorize the mayor and clerk to execute the document. Is there a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Sir, a second.
I'll second.
Any discussion?
I guess I'm curious if there should be an insurance component attached to that agreement?
I believe we should be getting insurance, but I can check on that and notify council.
Thanks. Good. Heather, would you please take role?
Councilmember Raditz.
Yes.
Mayor Sullivan.
Yes.
Councilmember Keck.
Yes.
Councilmember Grabowski.
Yes.
Councilmember Rosga.
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you. Consideration of approving the purchase of a forestry bucket truck. The current city budget includes the replacement of the city's forestry bucket truck. The Public Works Department has researched available models as it is recommending the purchase of an Axon Lift on Ford F-550 chassis from MTech. The quoted price is $184.9 based on COPro Plus contract with Michigan Association of Counties similar to MI deal. The budgeted funds for this purchase is $198,000. At this time, council could take action to approve purchase of an Axon Lift from MTech in the amount of $184.9. Is there a motion?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Any discussion?
Bill, how old is this truck?
So it's from 2010. And the bucket on the back, it's twisted the frame a little bit, so it's time for replacement.
So what kind of safety features are on the bucket part? It didn't really say.
So I think you have a picture there. It looks like it's got a cab on the back. Safety features in terms of like a harness and things like that?
Well, those have to be mandated, I'm sure.
Yeah.
That makes sense.
Yeah.
I assume so. I can verify for you.
Yeah, that's all.
Jeff would be able to tell you immediately, but I can check.
You will sell that truck next year then?
We'd likely auction it. I was hoping we could use it, but if the frame's bent, we really can't repurpose it.
Heather, would you please take role?
Councilmember Raditz.
Yes.
Mayor Sullivan.
Yes.
Councilmember Keck.
Yes.
Councilmember Grabowski.
Yes.
Councilmember Rosga.
Yes.
Motion approved.
Consideration of supporting a grant application by the Shoreline Cycling Club to purchase maintenance equipment in a storage building for use on the non-motorized trail park. The Shoreline Cycling Club has a maintenance agreement with the city for the non-motorized trail park. The SCC is applying for a grant to upgrade equipment and to construct a storage building. The SCC will provide matching funds, and the city will provide in-kind services to clear the building site and construct a gravel pad. At this time, council could take action to approve the grant application to the Manistee County Community Foundation, prepared and submitted by Shoreline Cycling Club. Is there a motion?
I'll make that motion.
And I'll second.
Any discussion?
I guess I do have questions, of course.
You need Dylan?
Does the proposed building, does it have a floor of any kind? Concrete, foundation?
We're going to build it on a gravel pad.
Oh, okay. All right. Is it going to have electrical?
No.
No electrical, just like the current one?
Well, the current one, the old Santa shed, is basically a mouse house.
Yeah.
It's not, we're not really using that.
Yeah, okay.
But no electrical. There's no electrical at the parking lot.
Okay.
Is there some reason why the city is providing the cleanup and all that?
Well, it's a grant application. We're doing an in-kind contribution. It's in our non-motorized trail park, and we have the equipment to do it, so we thought it was a good partnership. They also groom the trails there, so I think it's been a good partnership.
If you look at where it will go, down there on page 75 of your packet, there'd be very minimal clearing. Really just need to scrape off some little bushes, and the footprint will really fit into what we have open right now.
There we go.
One more, please. One more, please.
It's in the area where the current shed is, right?
Yep, in that blue box. So that blue box is where the old Santa's house is at right now.
Do you guys have any other questions?
Anything else?
That's good.
Thank you, Dylan.
Thanks.
Heather, would you please take role?
Councilmember Raditz.
Yes.
Mayor Sullivan.
Yes.
Councilmember Keck.
Yes.
Councilmember Grabowski.
Yes.
Councilmember Rosga.
Yes.
Motion approved.
Consideration of Compensation Commission Recommendation for Council Salaries. Compensation for the mayor and members of the city council are established based on procedures in the Charter, state statute, and local ordinance. Under this established procedures, an independent commission develops and recommends compensation rates for the city council. If approved, these rates would not become effective during the term of the current elected city council. The council may accept or reject the Compensation Commission recommendations that they may not be modified. Rejection can only occur if a two-thirds majority of council, five members, vote to reject the recommendations. If the recommendations are accepted, they will be implemented at the beginning of the year 2027. If no action is taken, the determination of the Compensation Commission shall become effective 30 days following the filing of its determination with the city clerk, April 22, 2025, pursuant to MCL 117.5C. The current salaries for the mayor and city council are 680207 and 529034 per year, respectively. These rates have been ineffective since January 2025. The Compensation Commission recognizes the importance of the city council and acknowledges the commitment required of its members. Therefore, the Compensation Commission is recommending a 10% increase to the current annual salaries. At this time, council could take action to accept or reject the Compensation Commission's recommendation to increase the salaries for the mayor and city council. If you do a motion, please state if your motion is to accept or reject.
I'll make a motion.
To accept.
Or reject.
Or reject.
I accept.
Accept. I'll second that motion to accept.
Any discussion? Heather, would you please take role?
Councilmember Raditz.
No.
Mayor Sullivan.
No.
Councilmember Keck.
Yes.
Councilmember Grabowski.
Yes.
Councilmember Rosga.
No.
Okay, let me...
You're good, Heather?
So... Basically, we rejected the recommendation, but in order to reject, it takes a vote of five members. It takes five members to reject it.
Okay.
So...
Mayor, if no action is taken, then what is the course of action if no action is taken?
Well, if no action is taken, then the motion fails, right?
No, if no action is taken, then it becomes effective 30 days from today. I wish that the attorney was here for this. But I believe what it means is that...
I think it failed because, yeah, I think we've got three out of five, so that's 60%, and then you need 66% for it to pass.
Right.
Majority.
Well...
As rejected, so it does pass.
Can it be put back on the agenda?
So I believe that it would pass, right? I'll have to follow up with the attorney on it, but that's, yeah.
I would appreciate that clarification.
Yeah, I will follow up with the attorney, just to be sure.
Thank you, Heather.
Are you good for me to move forward?
Yes.
Consideration of authorizing a City of Manistee ad hoc housing committee in ordinance with Section 13-16 of the city charter. City special committees may be appointed to make recommendations to city council. The City of Manistee Housing Commission is interested in working with the city to determine the future of the 47 scattered sites. The purpose of the committee is to work with the Housing Commission to make recommendations regarding the scattered sites and housing initiatives to city council. At this time, council could take action to authorize a City of Manistee ad hoc housing commission. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion.
I'll second that.
Any discussion?
So this ad hoc committee would be really focused on these particular scattered sites?
It would, yes. And working with the Housing Commission to come up with a recommendation for how to approach scattered sites, come up with a site for another housing development. But also, we have some other housing developments at different locations and come up with, if we're going to do a housing TIF for those. So a couple of different things, but primarily working with the Housing Commission.
Okay, and once that objective is met, the ad hoc committee dissolves?
Correct. Yep. They'll provide some documentation to council about the recommendations, and then it will dissolve.
Okay. Thank you.
Heather, would you please take role?
Councilmember Raditz.
Yes.
Mayor Sullivan.
Yes.
Councilmember Keck.
Yes.
Councilmember Grabowski.
Yes.
Councilmember Rosga.
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you. Consideration of commission appointment. City of Manistee Housing Commission, I'm sorry, consideration of the Housing Commission appointment. The City of Manistee Housing Commission has taken action to advertise among their residents the one resident vacancy, five-year term ending 5/31/28. This is a mayoral appointment, which requires a motion, second, and council-voted support. The following application was received. Sue Mychuk, 1204 Cypress Street. At this time, mayor and council could take action to make this appointment, as noted. Is there a motion? Or I'm sorry, I want to nominate Sue Mychuk, 1204 Cypress Street, to the term ending 5/31/28. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
Any discussion? Heather, would you please take role?
Councilmember Raditz.
My check.
Mayor Sullivan.
My check.
Councilmember Keck.
My check.
Councilmember Grabowski.
My check.
Councilmember Rosga.
My check.
Motion approved.
I don't know if she's here, but I hope we all said her name right. Consideration of applications to boards and commissions. The city clerk has taken action to advertise vacancies on the Board of Review, Compensation Commission, Historic District Commission, and Neighborhood Restoration and Beautification Commission. Mayor and manager appointments require a motion, second, and council-voted support. Nominations for council appointments do not require a second. After all nominations are made, council votes on the nominees until one nominee receives the majority support. The following applications have been received. Board of Review, one vacancy, alternate member, term ending 12/31/26. The purpose here is property value appeals council appointment. Nicholas Lusina, 374 8th Street. The Neighborhood Restoration and Beautification Commission, two vacancies, term ending 4/30/28. The purpose: identifying, research, and recommend opportunities and resources to help prevent, remediate, and eliminate blight and help beautify the City of Manistee council appointment. Nicholas Lusina, 374 8th Street. Jane Shimkey, 722 Harbor Tribe. At this time, mayor and council could take action to make appointments, as noted. Is there a nomination for the Board of Review?
I'll make a motion for Nicholas Lusin- Cincia.
Heather, could you please take role?
Councilmember Raditz.
Lusina.
Mayor Sullivan.
Lusina.
Councilmember Keck.
Lusina.
Councilmember Grabowski.
Lusina.
Councilmember Rosga.
Lusina.
That nomination has passed.
Thank you. Is there a nomination for the first NRBC vacancy?
I'll make that motion.
Or which one?
Lusina.
Can you please take a role, Heather?
Yep. Councilmember Raditz.
Lusina.
Mayor Sullivan.
Lusina.
Councilmember Keck.
Lusina.
Councilmember Grabowski.
Lusina.
Councilmember Rosga.
Lusina.
That nomination has passed.
Thank you. Is there a nomination for the second NRBC vacancy?
I'll make a motion for Shimkey.
Heather, would you please take role?
Councilmember Raditz.
Shimkey.
Mayor Sullivan.
Shimkey.
Councilmember Keck.
Shimkey.
Councilmember Grabowski.
Shimkey.
Councilmember Rosga.
Shimkey.
That nomination has passed.
Thank you. Now we will have a report from Mike's, I'm sorry, Mark Sahaki from the City of Manistee Housing Commission.
Mark? If you want to take this, you'll press the down arrow to advance. Yes.
Mayor and council, my name is Mark Sahaki, and I've been working for and with the Manistee Housing Commission since April of '23. So we prepared this report tonight. I have with, the entire board is here. Steve Fosik is the chair. Karen Goodman is the vice chair. Jenny Pelkin is a member. Nick Zamanski, and you just appointed our fifth member tonight, just a few minutes ago. So... So the staff, Lori Hatchu is the executive director. She couldn't be here tonight, so I'm in her place. But I wanted to mention a couple of things about the board. So the City of Manistee created the Housing Commission in accordance with Public Act 18, which is a Michigan-enabling legislation that allowed municipalities to create housing commissions. So that law says we have to have a resident serve on the board. So that's why we've had a challenge finding a resident, because we have 47 units to pick for, or residents to pick from right now. So, and the state act requires that they serve five-year staggered terms. So it's probably different than other boards and commissions, but that's mandated in Public Act 18, that they're five-year terms, and they're staggered. So one renewal every year for the Housing Commission. I just want to talk a little bit about some of the programs that the Housing Commission has. We have a domestic violence housing grant through MISTDA. So there are three houses scattered throughout the city. This is not one of those houses, but it's just a picture of a house. So we don't disclose the addresses to protect the residents that live there. We spent some time on this last year, but I thought for the new commissioner or new council members, the Housing Commission went through a redevelopment process for Century Terrace and Harborview a few years ago, and it created a new ownership entity. That's what this is saying. We joined a partnership with a developer, Commonwealth. Then we joined a partnership with an investor to provide the financing for the improvements for Century Terrace and Harborview. So it's kind of a flow chart. I don't know if anybody has any questions. We spent some time talking about it last year. But some of the good things about that relationship is that the Housing Commission retains the title to the land. So we deeded the buildings and improvements to the partnership. But part of that whole HUD side of the transaction was that we had to maintain control of the site, which is good. And I think at the end of the day, the property all comes back to the Housing Commission after the 15-year tax credit compliance. So we joined this partnership to access the capital markets, the tax credit markets, to do the improvements. That's the only way you could do it. So we joined a limited partnership with an investor partner. When that's done, everything reverts back to the Housing Commission. So that's the good news. Occupancy. So two years ago, we had 67 vacancies within Century Terrace, Harborview, and the scattered sites. Today, on March 31st, there are two vacancies in Harborview and Century Terrace, and one within the scattered sites. But we've been a hundred percent here for the last several months. So, these are just a few turnover units. So, I mean, it's pretty, a pretty remarkable change in a couple of years. Credit to Lori and the management staff, too. They worked really hard to lease these units. And right now, there's, I think, fifty people on the waiting list for the scattered sites and fifteen for Century Terrace and Harborview. So, we wanted to share a little demographic information with you, too, and just kind of delve into the difference in the programs. So, Century Terrace and Harborview, there are a hundred and sixty-seven units. There are a hundred and seventy-two residents. You can see the average household income. So, the average rent is three hundred and sixty dollars. That is based on thirty percent of a resident's income. So, and the bottom slide is, when we switched, when we went and changed the ownership structure, we changed the funding platform through HUD, too. We left the public housing program, and we went into a different funding vehicle within HUD. So, now, the difference is, we ask, we have a twenty-year contract. They call it a HAP payment, which is a housing assistance payment with HUD. And they make up the difference between the three sixty and the seven thirty, which is the fair market rent. So, that, that's our cash flow. We have to operate with that, that amount of cash, seven hundred and thirty per unit. Now, if you go to the right in the public housing side, we have a hundred and ten residents and eight in the domestic violence houses. The average household income is up a little. There are families, there's more of an earned income, whereas in Century Terrace, it's more of a social security retirement income. You can see the average rent is higher. But on the public housing side, we receive an operating grant to make up the operating costs, because three hundred and seventy-four dollars per unit doesn't cover the operating cost. So, that's a formula-driven basis within HUD in the public housing program. And then we also receive a capital fund grant to do capital improvements of a hundred and twenty-one thousand annually. So, that's kind of the difference. So, we're going to talk a little bit later about moving in, changing the scattered site into a different funding platform, similar to what we did at Harborview. We wanted to just show you the income limits for Manistee County. So, in Harborview and Century Terrace, we have different levels of units. There's thirty percent units, and there's sixty percent units, and there's eighty percent units. So, you would have to fall under those income restrictions to qualify. Now, at the public housing side, everybody up to eighty percent qualifies. So, does that make sense? A couple of renovations that we did, and we, I should back up a little bit. These were scattered site units, and some of them were held vacant for years. There were four that the previous commission took offline for some reason. We put them back online and renovated them. And we did an open house a month or two ago, and I don't know if anybody made it over there, but it turned out really well. Steve, you want to talk about some of the improvements?
Well, those four offline units that previous administration took offline, we brought back online, because we had such a large waiting list, at a cost of about two hundred thousand dollars to retrofit them. But it was all handled through capital funds that were already available through HUD. And we also, through grants with DTE, spent another two hundred and sixty-seven thousand dollars on the forty-seven scattered sites for boilers, refrigerators, and ranges that, for some odd reason, past administrations never used. We're in the process of trying to get a two million-plus grant through Consumers Energy to put heat exchangers, mini splits into all the apartments at Century Terrace, so that not only will we save seventy-five percent in energy costs, but our residents will be able to enjoy air conditioning in the summer at no cost to us. We've spent some money with Jason Thompson Landscaping, cleaning up in front of Harborview down by the river. Lori is still trying to get our website up and running. And we're just now starting to look at an RFP to clean up the whole river in front of Harborview and Century Terrace, and put a handicap or accessible walkway down there with fishing spots and stuff like that for our residents and for everyone in the community. And then you can see the before and after pictures.
Let's talk about that for a second.
Okay. Mark's proud of these.
Yeah, I am proud of them, because I used to dock my boat there, which I had a mess across the way. So, we hired Jason Thompson to take care of the, that was really a jungle in there. So, we did that last year, if you remember. And then we, we didn't get the landscaping in until like late fall, but we did some solar lighting, so we're really anxious to see what greens out, how it looks there. But it's really a big improvement. And then they went and cleared some of the clutter and underbrush along the riverbank, too.
This is the remains of the Century Boat Company. Apparently, that was the well that they used to test their boats. We are asking for a grant to take that out of there. We consider it a safety hazard. We have checked with the City Historical Society to see if there was any prominence there, and the recommendation was to just get rid of it. So, we're working toward that also. And now it's Karen's turn. She gets to talk about the future from this point forward.
Good evening. As you can see, this is the complex up on Vine Street, and these are most of our scattered sites. We are hoping that, moving forward, that when we build in order to relocate people, that we will be able to take an area like the Vine Street area and then reconfigure it with better housing. We want to be, we want housing that will be family-friendly. We want it to be appealing to the neighborhood. I drive around, I know on Twelfth Street, I can't wait to see those, those homes be removed and have a better impact in that community with housing, family housing that fits the neighborhood. We think that it's really important to, to look at all of the different sites throughout. This is the majority of ours, but they are in different locations throughout the city, and we will be assessing all of them. Now, most of them, I think we said thirty-seven of them at least, are probably going to have to be considered not fixable. So, we will want to replace all of those. And this is where our opportunity comes in. In your ad hoc committee, we've talked about this before, is that we have to have a location for people to move to, so that we can take care of the homes that are sitting there that they had been in. So, the opportunity is to build, on the next page is a picture, of something different. You know, we look at, you know, I'd be excited to have something like that in a neighborhood, and, and people would like to live there. And again, you saw that the AMI graph that was there, and I think the sixty percent line, it starts at like forty-four thousand. And when I was employing professionals, and you probably employing teachers, you're, that's the salary we're talking about. And people can't, you know, that's, that's who can move into these type of homes. And if they have a family, they'll move into the homes and hopefully, if I, if I can convince people enough, will have enough green space around these homes, that they will be attractive to the whole neighborhood. It's important that we work in partnership. I'm excited to work with different communities, different organizations throughout our community. Habitat is out there. I started talking with Vanessa probably about eight years, six years ago. And, you know, we talked about the property on Twelfth Street. Now that they're building single-family homes, their first pilot is done, and so it's really beautiful. It's livable for somebody who is on, you know, meets that AMI even. I think there's all kinds of community opportunities. I know the land bank is out there. I can talk for the county. You know, all kinds of opportunities that we can work together to improve the housing within our community. And I am very excited that Mark, who was here in two thousand and two, was that last time you were here, came back, and he has, I have toured the homes and the neighborhoods and the complexes that he was part of in Big Rapids, and they're beautiful. I was so excited when we went into the neighborhoods, because like there were college professors who needed homes. The, the housing commission in Big Rapids built like the first three, and then others in the city, and everybody else, you know, kind of built the rest of them. But they're beautiful. So, this is kind of the vision that I think we could have for Manistee County, Manistee City. You know, together, we can all kind of build our housing, so that we all know we can improve upon, oh, our ability to have people work within our community. I was telling a couple of people earlier today when I was working, I had staff that were driving down from Interlaken, from Cadillac, and up from Oceana County, because they can't find housing in this area. And those are the people that are in that forty-four to seventy thousand dollars a year. So, we want them in our community. We want them spending money here. We want them paying taxes, owning a home, those type of things, so that we can kind of build our community. Anything else?
Yeah, I'll just add a couple of things. So, we hired this consulting group, Baker Tilly. So, we're trying to be really thoughtful about going through and looking at the options. So, I don't think that, that was done last time. So, there's a, and we're probably going to end up in the same sort of transaction where it's, we will switch the funding platforms. They call it RAD, Rental Assistance Demonstration, simply a different funding platform within HUD. That's, that's all it is. Tenants will still pay the, the same rent. But in, but we have to do that in order to get the property out of the public housing platform, because if you don't, you can't access the capital markets. You can't, you can't go and do a tax credit application. So, it just limits, we would be stuck with a hundred and twenty-one thousand dollars a year, trying to maintain forty-seven units. And you know what costs are today to do anything. That doesn't get us anywhere. So, that's the real, that's one of the motivating factors, is to change that. It releases that, those buildings from the program. It just opens up our opportunities. And Baker Tilly, I've worked with them a lot, and they're providing the analysis on what might be the best approach. So, and then you have to know that these scattered sites, most of them were military housing brought here in the, like, the nineteen-sixties, fifties and sixties. They're well beyond their useful life. We've kind of had this discussion many times about, is, are they worth saving? They're not. I mean, they have two and a half, they don't even have three twelve-slope roofs. I think they're two and a half twelve-slope. I mean, very, very poor construction. It's not a prudent investment to try and save those. But I say that, but we need to provide, HUD will mandate that we relocate tenants. They have a right to return to a unit. So, that's why we've talked about, we can't just tear down and then wait to rebuild them and, and rehouse people. We have to look at another site to build on. Then we have this, that existing site, so we think up there in the, where the majority of the scattered site, that'll be another redevelopment site for the housing commission. Or it could go to, I mean, we could sell it. There's lots of options, you know, we could. So, I just wanted to walk through those, those issues. That's why we're thinking about doing this, so we can, we can prepare some different financial opportunities.
Any questions?
Mark, are these houses going to be on Holly Court, too? Are they tearing out those houses back on Holly Court, or just the Vine Street house?
No, predominantly the Holly Court area.
Okay.
They're, and probably the ones on Twelfth Street. There's a few scattered ones we thought we, that are in good shape, that they fit within the neighborhood that we could keep.
No, years ago, they used to have some kind of other wiring in the houses, because I was on a few fires in there. And I don't know if they ever changed those to copper or anything like that.
Yeah, I, I mean, we, they're inspected, so HUD inspects them, and we go through the process. So, I'm assuming they are, that they meet all the safety standards.
Okay.
I think, but back to what Karen said, having the committee, then I think, I think the housing commission wants to bring back a project that works with everybody and has a collaboration and input.
Even if we look at different phases, you know, we know that the first phase would be having to kind of take our current residents, find homes for them, and then, you know, have these other homes being built. But also a second phase in the future may be, what are the projects would you like us to get involved in? Your housing commission used them, you know, they are, they are, he is the expert. And so, we can kind of move forward in that, in the second phase, third phase, you know, and just see a great opportunity.
I just wanted to say, you guys did a really great job, and you got elected on the boards. I mean, you changed the whole system around. And I've been to a lot of the meetings, so I know what you guys have updated when Jim Smith was on, and it really makes, it's a whole difference.
Yeah, I think what Jim says is right, and I like how you're doing this approach. So, I know it's going to be a long haul, but I, I think it's a good thing.
I think we said today, we have a timeframe on it, so we have to do two years.
Well, if we get tax credits, if we apply for tax credits and we're awarded, you have a two-year build-out period. So, that's, that's that timeframe.
I have a question. I feel like I already know the answer to this, the HVAC, the air conditionings at Century Terrace. Wasn't that in the original? No? Okay.
It's not.
It was.
It was.
It was.
That's what I thought, okay.
Oh, it was, it really?
There was window air conditioners supposedly in the original bad conversion. There were a lot of things that were in, that were promised to the city.
But the mini splits weren't in.
No, not the mini splits, just air conditioners.
Okay. You're good. We already had this conversation, you and I. Good, okay.
This comes up every so often.
There were, there were a lot of things that were removed from the list, which we had spoken of, but which we tried to find out who authorized that, how that happened. We cannot be able to give any answers.
Yeah, I don't think we will.
Are they going to do anything with the houses on Twelfth Street, too? Or are they going to leave them alone?
I think those are a candidate for demolition, too.
I will tell you that we have come with one thing that will not happen with the thirty-seven scattered sites, is we will not put up a central building with thirty-seven apartments in it. These are family units. We want them to keep them as single-family or duplex-type homes.
Or a townhouse.
Or townhouses, yes.
No, we need those kind of houses for the people moving in.
And if we can, if we give them houses that they can love and respect, then we'll get that respect back.
Anybody else got any more questions?
Okay, one last thing. You have a good bunch of people on the housing commission. It's a pleasure to work for them. They're committed, they do a great job. We have long meetings, as you know, if you've been there, you know. I don't think we've had less than a two-hour meeting yet.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mark.
Okay, introduction of the fiscal year twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six budget. Mr. Bradford.
Thank you, Mayor, members of council. As we normally do, kick off the budgeting cycle, which is basically all of April, I put together a presentation to kind of run through the budget document. We don't normally take questions tonight. We reserve that for the scheduled work session. So, Bill, did you have any comments before I get started?
Nope. I think it's a, have a good overview, and looking forward to work with council to bring this to adaption. Thank you.
So, just some citywide highlights. All the funds in the city budget, and there are multiple funds, the total amount is about twenty-three million, five hundred thousand, which is about a four-point-seven percent increase over last year. So, that's pretty typical. We see fluctuations, mainly depending on how many grants we get. The core revenues tend to just increase at a little bit of a rate. If you look at the charts down there, on the left by area, the biggest part of the budget, obviously, is the general fund. The water and sewer funds are also very important. And then there's a lot in the other bucket, because there's multiple funds in there, like refuse, and the oil and gas, and the capital fund and what have you. City budget by type of expense, almost three-quarters of the city expenses are operational expenses, and almost probably two-thirds of that are personnel. So, that's what the city provides. We don't make widgets. We provide services, and we have to have people to provide services. So, that's why the operational expense dominates that chart there. Just a quick overview, our assessed value increased by about thirty-one million or eight percent. And while that seems like a lot, it's less than half of what it was last year. We've had tremendous growth in the property values in the city of Manistee over the last three years. Our taxable value also increased, but it was down significantly, the amount of increase compared to last year. Our millage rates are likely to decline by about point three zero due to a headly rollback, meaning the sales and uncappings were more than the rate of inflation plus the new construction. So, we get our millage rate rolled back. We're going to have about a seven percent water rate increase and a two-point-two-five percent sewer increase. But remember, the bill is not proportional, it's not fifty-fifty. So, overall, that's a three and a half percent rate increase. And that's consistent with the pass rate study and also the recently updated rate sufficiency analysis in order to operate the system. So, we were proud that we were able to keep it at that. Because of the new contract for refuse that we bid out and which will be coming to council at a future meeting, plus the curbside recycling, the refuse fund is going to have some increases, which we'll talk about a little bit more later in this presentation. The budget funds council priorities, funds about seven-point-four million in capital improvements, and we only reduce headcount by about a half of an FTE, and that is by an open position that we're not including in this year's budget. The chart on the right, I just put in there to show you what the total city operating millage is. It's declined from about twenty-one, almost twenty-two mils in nineteen ninety-eight, down to about seventeen-point-seven-nine. So, that's the lowest it's been in my tenure, even before my tenure, which I think is a result of headly rollbacks primarily, and we've never had a headly overrun. I think there's a misperception about the city's millage rate, and I just wanted to demonstrate what that has been a couple of decades. There's issue pages within the budget towards the front of it, and I've got some of them that we're going to talk about here. So, one is drug enforcement, council priority, community problem. The budget plans on putting an officer back on the scent drug team, once we have thirteen officers staffed, and they've done their field training and were at full strength. The problem is, we've had retirements, we've had attrition, and it's hard to get those positions filled. So, I think Josh is down one, and he's been advertising. Once that position is filled and trained, then he plans on putting somebody on the scent drug team. We will have to lease a car, that's included in the motor pool budget for that position, and this will help to support just a greater level of narcotic and drug enforcement in the city. So, we're looking forward to seeing that happen. Fire and EMS, there's three issues here that were pointed out. One is exploring collaboration. Chief Herndon has been very active in talking with surrounding communities, exploring ways that we can work together, work cooperatively, work collaboratively, to increase the level of service, drive down costs, and just be more efficient altogether. One of the things that he's looking at is potentially forming a fire district. Obviously, that's something that would take a lot of conversation, and the communities would all have to approve it, but we're, they're looking into that. We're hoping that recommendations can come out of those conversations in the coming year. They do take some time. The ladder and pumper truck's been an issue for the last several years. The equipment is still working fine, it's maintained, but it is getting older, it is having more repair and maintenance needs. To replace both those pieces of equipment is between two-point-five and two-point-eight million today. They have fairly long lead times if you were to order one. However, in light of the conversations that are going on about the fire district, the thought was to kind of postpone ordering those, because one of the ideas in a fire district is that not every fire department needs every piece of equipment. And so, there's, could be some savings on equipment or collaboration to help pay for that. And so, we don't want to get too aggressive on that until we know if we're going to be able to maybe share some of those costs. If we were to replace them, though, it would require probably a voted bond, just like it did the last time we replaced the aerial lift. That would have to go to the people, and it would be approximately three hundred thousand per year in debt service, and approximately one-point-three-five mils plus or minus if we went down that path. But we're a long ways from that. I just wanted to address it, because it's been an issue in the past. And finally, fire station needs. You know, we have a hundred and twenty-five-plus-year-old fire station, and as we've been putting a lot of work into it, you can see they've repaired the outside, they're tuck pointing it, and I think they'll be back on site once the weather warms up to finish that. There are going to be some window work done and that stuff, but there's other things in that fire station that need to be done. The scope of the project that we're doing now didn't cover everything. And you can see those in the capital improvement plan. An example of that would be it needs HVAC work in there. But there's multiple projects that are listed. So, we're trying to maintain that building. We did a big project, and now we're trying to break the rest of the project into bite-sized PFOs at the Old City Landfall site, we've been through a lot of work with our consultants. They've done monitoring, they've put down test wells, they've put on more test wells, and they finally submitted a report to Eagle. And now we're just waiting on Eagle for them to tell us, okay, what are the next steps? We're not in any rush for that. The contamination is fairly contained, we've delineated it, it's not threatening. It's not threatening water wells because those houses are on municipal water. So, we're just waiting for Eagle, and once they get back, then we'll know what the next steps are, which hopefully will just be continued monitoring and maybe putting down a few permanent wells. We do have money in the budget to help support that in the refuse fund. Street funding, we've talked a lot about this since the first of the year. The budget does support a few projects, about 1.765 million in street fund investment and about 2.9 million for those total projects. Remember, each project normally has water and sewer stuff associated with it. So, the total project is bigger than just the investment in the streets. It is going to have some asphalt overlays for the poor street segments. I believe Public Work Director Jeff McCool talked about that. Some of these streets are so bad, we have to do something on them even though you would never do that based on asset management principles or best practice. But at least it will give some relief to those roads. And there are going to be several segments done here yet this fiscal year. I think they're, they've bitted them out and they're just getting, trying to figure out when they're going to actually do them. And then, the 2027 US 31 reconstruction, which is absolutely huge for the community. That planning is well underway, and the city has applied for a trap, a TAP grant, transportation kind of improvement grant for non-motorized, which would help with sidewalks and plants and some things like that. We haven't heard on that yet, but hopefully we will hear back from them. That would be done in conjunction with the reconstruction. Just another slide on street funding. We've talked about this, the chart on the right at the top shows, you know, since 2008, we've barely moved the needle. It's gone up a little bit in road conditions, but we've spent millions and millions and millions of dollars. And we really have tried different approaches, different techniques. We've been very innovative, we've leveraged lots and lots of grant money, but we really can't do any more without further funding. And we did talk about that, a couple of ways that could be done. This has been in this budget and past budgets is a headly override or a millage-supported bond issue. However, just recently, like within the last week, there is significant movement at the state level to help increase funding for streets. None of that legislation has passed yet, but it's moving in both houses, and hopefully something will come out with that. And I've got a slide later that we'll talk about it. It would be absolutely a game changer if something happened, came out of Lansing. Streetscape and Riverwalk, on the streetscape front, we're pursuing a RAP grant from MEDC to help redo the area between Spruce and Oak on River Street, kind of consider that Phase 1. We should hear on that relatively soon. Hopefully, we can get that and then, you know, then we can move on to other phases once that's done. And then, we're also going to be coordinating with the Gateway Project because there'll be some streetscape treatments that are done with that. And then, we have to fill in the middle section in some way down the road. On the Riverwalk, the DDA Riverwalk, the one that was funded by the EDA federal grant is underway. All the boards, I think, have pretty much been replaced except for one section. We're working on some of the structural stuff and the landscaping, so that's really coming along well. Took a long time to get to this thing because of bidding, technical difficulties and pricing difficulties. And finally, by breaking it out, we got bids that we can afford, so everybody's pleased with the way that's coming along. On the North Riverwalk, they're getting ready to finish up the documents for bidding. Hopefully, that'll be out, you know, in a couple of months at the latest. And then, once those bids come back, we'll see if we can award them and get that, that project going, potentially later this fall or next spring. On the West Riverwalk, where we had the problems with the dredging, we still have the net shut issue. We're working with the Corps of Engineers. We should have an insurance claim with either them or our insurance carrier, and we'll have to figure out where and when to relocate that. And then, as part of the Gateway Project, there will also be some Riverwalk rehabilitation. So, basically, the Riverwalk from the bridge, 31 Bridge, all the way down past the Marina is, is pretty much going to get redone to some degree or another. Water and sewer bond issue. The rate sufficiency analysis that we had done as part of the DWAM grant, and which was required by the state, anticipated capital projects at the water utility wouldn't be able to fund with existing cash. It does have the ability to pay for debt service though, to be able to do this. So, the capital improvement plan is calling for about 5 million in water main work over the next three years. Those are all coupled with street reconstruction on top. So, for example, US 31, sections of McKee Street, sections of 4th Street. Most of that money is in the US 31 water main. We really need to replace that. This is a once-in-a-generation project, and we don't want to have them build a brand-new road over a water main that could fail. So, it's our chance to upgrade it. So, once we kind of finalize what those projects look like, we'll be coming back with council to probably issue a revenue bond for that. The sewer utility also has a few projects that are less well-defined. If they can get those defined and make sure the timing works, there are some that may require some bonds as well, so we might piggyback on that. And then, in fiscal year 2030 or 31, there's probably another $2 million worth of water bonds for, again, water mains. And those were also talked about in the rate sufficiency analysis. Okay, getting on to the general fund itself, the budget is balanced at 8.27 million. But I will say, absent or except the years right after the Great Recession in like 2009, 10, and 11, where we actually had significant headcount reduction through attrition, this has been the most difficult budget to balance in my tenure. We started off with a $451,000 deficit when all the requests came in and the preliminary revenue estimates. And that, that's really a big deficit on an $8 million budget, especially when the budget is fairly lean as it is. But all the department heads and the city manager came together over two days and went through the budget with a fine-tooth comb. We reviewed all the revenue estimates, we questioned assumptions, we worked through that, and we modified the revenue estimate by about 100,000. And then, really, we did most of the work on the, on the expense side and cut about 340,000 out of the general fund budget. Every department cut something, whether it was a capital expense for tools or equipment that they needed or operational expenses, or less travel and training, or whatever it might be. But we were able to get it down to a balanced budget, did not have to lay anybody off. We did have one, as I mentioned, half-time equivalent position that's authorized but was never hired, and we've eliminated that. In general, the general fund budget maintains all the services that people have come to expect. So, I think that's a win, and just by way of reference, the total general fund employment is 50.5 people. So, that's an awful lot of services that those 50.5 people provide to the community. I think they do a great job. On the revenue side, our revenue growth is slowing. It was 2.2% this year versus 4.5% last year. That trend will continue. Future budgets are going to be much more difficult than they've been in the last three years. The, the gusher of federal revenue after COVID and the two back-to-back years of 5% inflation, which makes our taxable value go up, are things of the past. So, we're going to have much, much more challenging budgets, and the general fund particularly, moving forward. Part of our growth this year is also in tax-abated or tax-capture districts like the DDA. Mentioned we had the headly rollback, and that headly rollback cost us almost 2% of our operating revenue. So, 80,000 plus annually in perpetuity, and we've had headly rollbacks the last couple of years. Our city operating millage is at its lowest level in decades, which I mentioned over here. If you look at that, it's at 16.64%. Just another revenue chart. Interest revenue is expected to decline as interest rates start to come down off of their highs. Hopefully, they'll kind of stabilize for a little bit, but it really is dependent on economic conditions, what's going to happen. But I am expecting them to go down. Our revenue sharing slows, just a slight increase. Marijuana excise tax revenue that's passed through to us from the state is going to go down. Did go down this year because we only had four retail licenses accounted rather than five. Don't know if we're going to get a fifth one back. And we had lower personal property tax reimbursement because of the way the state's formula works. So, our revenue increase for this proposed budget was only 50% of what it was last year. So, again, just the trend of lower revenues. On the expense side, I just got a few pie charts to kind of show the rough breakdown. Police is the biggest section of the budget at 23%, followed closely by DPW at 21%. Administration, which is pretty much everything at city hall, manager, finance, clerk, community development, planning and zoning, is about 19%, and fires at about 17%. So, those are the, the big four, and then obviously, we have parks and some debt service and the general buildings and what have you. As I mentioned, expenses by type on the right, our wages and the general fund are about 47%, and our benefits are about 24, so that's 70%. Like I said, about two-thirds to three-quarters is an employee cost. We have a balanced budget. The highlights of the general fund, I mentioned, we have a very tight, very lean budget on the expenditure side because of all the cost-cutting we had to do to bring it to balance. The council compensation commission recommendations, which you guys talked about today, but a previous council approved them, and those are fully in effect this year. We're obviously placing an officer on scent. When a council's goals was maintaining partnerships, this budget maintains partnerships. Those are just a couple of examples. We have many more throughout the budget, and again, we're maintaining our services. Moving off the general fund of the water and sewer utility. The rate sufficiency analysis that we had done two years ago, as I mentioned, recommended a 7% increase for water and 2 and 1/4 for sewer. Combined with an average customer, that's 3.5%, which is what the previous rate study showed, in which the city maintained. 3.5% is lower than the typical water and sewer inflation, as measured by CPI by the federal government. So, we're pretty proud that we're able to do that. Some communities refuse to raise their rates for years, and then they have to have a 20% increase because they just don't want to do it. Whereas, we just are slow and steady and able to fund everything we need to in our water and sewer utility. The charts, which are here and also in the budget, show what the water rates would be and what the sewer rates are, and then the illustrative monthly bill. So, a typical 6,000-gallon customer would have an increase of about $3.50 per month or about $42 a year on their water and sewer combined bill, if you use 6,000 gallons. Just some key issues for water and sewer. There's still aggressive state mandates on lead service lines, identification replacement, there's more coming down every year. Jeff and Spicer Group have been working really hard on trying to get in front of those and make sure they're doing everything in compliance, but there'll be more, and we'll just have to see where that all plays out. I mentioned pretty aggressive water main replacement in the coming years. Nice thing is, to the extent possible, we're able to combine those with street resurfacing projects, so it's, it's good paying for a buck. They're still working on the clean water recovery facility certification. I think that's close to being, being done. And obviously, working out operational things. That's a huge plant expansion, and it just takes a while to learn that. And then, there's also various capital projects, including some sewer main work, although that's limited, but also upgrades to the original plant, which weren't done as part of the big expansion that we had. There's a lot of still old equipment at that wastewater treatment facility, and the long-term capital improvement plan shows some of those things being fixed and replaced. Moving on to the Marina, 2024 was a really good year at the Marina. Had good weather, reasonable prices, excellent fishing. Those are the three things that drive the Marina, that and the weather. So, we're hoping we can have a good year. We are seeing increased interest in our seasonal slips. Think that's directly attributable to three things. One, the Manistee downtown is hopping. Two, we've got a great staff down there that makes the boaters feel welcome. And three, we've got brand-new docks, and I think that just brings the boaters in. One, one thing of note, the capital improvement fund used to subsidize the Marina to the tune of about 60,000 a year. That was to help pay for debt service on the Marina building. One of those loans has been paid off, so that's been cut to $30,000 this year, and it will go away next year. That's a really good thing. It frees up money for other capital projects, and the Marine is able to still be self-sufficient. There is a pump-out grant that the Marina applied for to replace those facilities. Hopefully, they'll get that. I don't think they've heard yet. That's included in the budget if we get the grant. We'll probably be, also be upgrading security cameras through a grant, as well as other ones citywide. Moving on to the boat launch, our rates are going to remain at 50 annual and 10 daily. It's self-sustaining, but it is vulnerable to weather, gas prices, fishing, again, same things that affect the Marina. We budgeted for the past several years to replace the First Street auto attendant, but it's still working, and a new one is very expensive. So, until we find something that really is going to be an upgrade to that and, and work for us, I mean, we're going to keep the old one running. We're still researching that. It's not a pressing thing because the old one has been actually running fairly well. We are accumulating some cash reserves for future capital improvements. As an example, Ninth Street Boat Launch could use some improvements, and some point, that First Street parking lot's going to need to be resurfaced. The Boat Launch isn't going to be able to pay for that entirely, but they certainly could contribute. There's been talk about adding a kayak launch at one of the boat launches as well. And in the next year's budget, we may see a transition of the fish cleaning station repairs and maintenance from Parks' budget to the Boat Launch, because really, if the Boat Launch wasn't there, you wouldn't have the fish cleaning station, you wouldn't have those repair and maintenance costs. The Boat Launch currently pays all the utilities for the fish cleaning station, but the repairs and maintenance have traditionally been done by Parks. So, we're going to look at that and see if it makes more sense to shift those in future budgets. We talked a little bit about streets, the Pacer ratings, the condition assessments. This is in the budget. It shows, you know, the amount of work that's being done and kind of what's planned in the transportation improvement plan over the next three years and the current, in the, in the budget year. This is done on a calendar-year basis or a construction-year basis though, because it spans our fiscal years. And there's a lot of work being, being proposed. There's over $12 million in the, in total project costs in the four-year period. Those are, of course, subject to change depending on priorities, whether grants come through, and sometimes things get moved around. But we, we do the best to try to project those out. Just a map of the proposed work. You can see there's quite a bit on there that's also in your budget, and an example of what happens, you know, when you reconstruct a street. It goes from looking like that on the left to beautiful new curbs and fresh asphalt on the right. Okay, so this was what I was telling you about. There's movement in the legislature, in both the House and the Senate, to dramatically increase funding for streets. And this is a package of bills that passed the Republican House. And what it's saying there, it's kind of hard to read, but if this, if this were to be passed and adopted as written, which it won't be, there'll be amendments and stuff, but if it was, it would result in 154% increase in street funding for the city. We would, we would have an increase from, the current amount is 1,080,000, it would go up to 2.7 million. So, it'd be almost a $1.7 million a year increase for streets in the city. That would be a game changer. Don't know if that's going to happen. There seems to be more movement on that right now than there has been probably in my tenure for significant money. They did pass some gas tax increases in the past. They've done one-time allocations of state general fund dollars, but this is a wholesale makeover of the way they're going to fund roads. Now, what that looks like, if it gets through, we don't know, but it's kind of like, stay tuned and we'll see what happens. The one downside to this is if this package were to pass, there isn't enough road-building capacity in the state to soak up all these dollars. The prices are going to tend to go up, but they don't put time limits on spending this, so we can, we can make that work. And hopefully, the industry, if this does pass, will build some capacity. It'll mean more jobs for sure because they're going to have to put on extra queues, buy more equipment. So, stay tuned. Okay, refuse. This is going to be a big issue in the budget. I'm sure there'll be a lot of conversation about it. Republic Services Contract is up June 30th, so we issued a request for proposals. We got one response back, which was Republic Services. And their increase was pretty much in line with what we thought it was going to be based on preliminary conversations. It actually went down just a little bit from what they had kind of proposed. But basically, their refuse disposal rates, so to pick up the residential totes that they do now, that's going to increase by about 11%. We're proposing a 10.3% rate increase to the consumer. And that would drive your tidy tote from 17.75 to 19.50 per month. The other big, big, big change is mandatory residential curbside recycling. And the cost to provide that service for residents would be about $250,000, which is about $6.60 per month for a count. So, those are both, but, both included in the budget, those increases, both the cost and the revenue sides of that. We talked about the PFAS. The budget also funds some new trash receptacles, the ornamental iron ones, which we've been doing for a few years. And there's funds to add an additional freezer at the fish cleaning station so we don't have some of the issues that we had last year with the overwhelming amount of fish guts. The one thing I do want to point out, if you look at the chart on the right side of that, when I first started with the city, the tax levy was about two-thirds of the revenue. And now, the user fees are about two-thirds of the revenue to the fund. And that's because councils have not wanted to raise the property tax that funds that. So, we have a two-revenue stream system for our refuse fund, some property taxes and user fees. So, traditionally, we've put any increases on the user fees, recognizing that refuse is really a utility. But there are also some service-type aspects to the refuse fund that, that are appropriate to put on tax. are appropriate to put on taxes. So council has the option to divide those costs up between the charges and the millage, because we do have the ability to levy more millage for refuse because it's a separate, distinct millage from our general operating. But they've not chosen to do that in the past, and we've not presented it that way. I'm just saying that's an option if somebody wanted to explore that. Capital Improvement Fund. We've got about $543,000 of expenses scheduled. Some of that is debt service that you can kind of see at the top, and then there's some other projects that are slated there. Some of those are going to get started this year, so the dollars you see are actually the budgeted dollars, but some of those projects span fiscal years and were related to last year. So we've got a good mix of projects there. I want to talk that there's body camera upgrades in the budget for about $50,000. Josh is going to be writing a local revenue sharing board grant for that, hopefully, and can get that, and then those funds could be freed up. But that's something he has to have for his operations. It's an expectation of police departments nowadays, is to have those. I did mention there's additional fire projects. One of the ones in there is some of the concrete work around the fire station, and Motor Pool. There are several vehicles that are slated to be purchased this year based on the schedule and their evaluation by the mechanic and the staff over there. I'll just run through them quickly. There's a pickup truck. That was a 2003. It's already been pushed three years past its expected life. There's a service box with a truck that's slated to be replaced. That's for the facility manager. He's driving a 1999 truck that was a hand-me-down from the sewer department, and it's having significant problems that they can't get fixed. That may look a lot cheaper than that, depending on the type of vehicle. They're still talking about that. We might be able to get by with just like a van that's got some racks in it, so we wanted to budget the worst-case scenario. It's time to replace the street sweeper, which is over 10 years old. This model would be different. Rather than just having brushes, it would have brushes and a vacuum. So one of the things that the DPW can use that for is to go along behind the leaf pickup, where they have the tank and clean that up a little bit better. The chip box is a new item. You just approved the purchase earlier tonight of the boom truck. The current boom truck has a boom and a box to chip into. This chip box is a low-cost way to be able to put that on the back of one of their flatbeds and use it to collect wood chips, and then take it off when they don't need it, and it doesn't put the stress on the boom truck. So that's kind of, those two kind of go together. There's the lease scent vehicle that I talked about, and Josh is going to be partnering with the county sheriff on that. There's a mower, a new one that's slated for the DPW. They've gotten, or not the DPW, the wastewater treatment plant, they have a lot more area to mow with the new plant, and the stuff that they have is inadequate to get that done. There's another pickup for Parks, which is a 2008 replacement. This is the one that carries a fuel tank for all the mowers and stuff when they're at the peak of their summer. And finally, there's a Parks Utility Vehicle on the budget. Those are all vetted through the motor pool, and we schedule that out 10 years to try to make that work as best as possible. Oil and Gas Fund. Just briefly, it protects the royalties, and it's spitting off $443,000 this year, which is a benefit most communities don't have. We've done really well with investment earnings since we started investing that, since basically 2008, and it has grown that fund significantly, while putting off more and more revenue each year to be able to spend. Ramsdale Theater. Just briefly, there's a lease agreement that the RRCA operates under since 2016. They have asked for a new agreement. Negotiations, discussions with the city are underway. However, the budget does allocate an additional $25,000 for repairs and maintenance, but it keeps their appropriation amount at $50,000. Downtown Development Authority, that budget is included within the city budget. It looks like they spend about $66,000 of their fund balance. I would defer any questions on the DDA budget to Andrew Stafford as their director. The charts there just kind of show you the percentage of the DDA capture. The city's about 62%, and the non-city taxes are about 39%. So just gives you an idea of where a lot of their revenue comes from. They have other revenue besides their tax capture, but that's the bulk of it. Finally, the Budget Path. And no, it's not the path you see on the right. That's the beautiful, award-winning project down by the Boat Launch that we had done several years ago. But tonight, we're introducing the budget. Next week, there'll be a study session where it's council's time to ask questions of department heads and the city manager. On the 15th, we'll have a public hearing, and then another budget study session. There's two optional study sessions on the 22nd and 29th, if council deems that necessary. And the budget is tentatively scheduled to be adopted by May 7th, on May 7th regular meeting. The charter specifies that the budget has to be adopted by May 15th. If it's not adopted, then the city council or city manager's recommended budget goes into effect. So that is the budget calendar. It's very similar to prior years. So you've got the budget. It's out on the website. You've probably gotten your binders. So if you have questions this week prior to next week, feel free to call the city manager or myself. We're happy to ask them. I know it's a complex document. We try to break it down so it's simple to understand, but there's a lot in there. Thank you very much for your time tonight.
Thanks, Ed. Citizens Comment. This is an opportunity for citizens and attendants to comment on municipal services, activities, or other areas of city involvement. A 5-minute letter submitted to council will not be publicly read.
There's not enough time. However, tonight I'm going to focus on something topical and will return to my previously-prepared remarks in future commission meetings. And again, this may take a few seconds more than five minutes.
You have five minutes, Mr. Campbell.
Tonight, my focus is on the disappearance of 250 to 300 brown people simply accused of being members of Tren de Aragua, a gang from Venezuela. The Trump administration says the group should be treated as an invading force. There are numerous stories about non-gang members being deported to this black-hole hell of a supermax prison in El Salvador. I will focus on only two. Andre, a gay hairdresser and makeup artist in Venezuela who self-reported and was seeking asylum in the U.S. He came here lawfully and was working when he was kidnapped and forcefully removed to a concentration camp in El Salvador, causing him to miss a hearing on his asylum status the very next week, where his lawyers could refute the baseless allegations against him. But they never got that chance. He has a hearing scheduled for two weeks from the last hearing. However, ICIS told his lawyers that they will not facilitate communications with their client and that they will not make him available for the hearing. Can you imagine what that innocent gay man is being subjected to right now? This should shock our conscience, if we're still capable of being shocked any longer by the cruelty and lawlessness of this administration. This lawlessness and cruelty is beyond comprehension unless we, the American people, have also lost all conscience. Andre was kidnapped because of his tattoos, tattoos seen on anyone in a coffee shop, not gang tattoos. Many cops are covered in tattoos. Should they also, based on that alone, which seems to be the case in most of these illegal, unconstitutional renditions, be disappeared to an El Salvadorian concentration camp? Ponder that for a moment, officers. But wait, there's more. Héctor Reyes Barrios was a soccer player from Venezuela, came to the U.S., working in the U.S., a soccer coach in the U.S., a lawful asylum seeker who had a Real Madrid tattoo, a football team tattoo. And also, the Trump regime has a picture of him where he made the peace sign, and they said this was a gang sign. This is complete and utter insanity. An official with ICE subsequently admitted in a sworn deposition that, quote, "Many of those deported under the Alien Enemies Act had no criminal records in the U.S.," unquote, "and they would likely find it difficult to elicit criminal histories from their home country." All of these men and women, El Salvador refused to take the women we sent to a men's-only prison. All of these men and women were in the process of hearings. They were pulled out of those proceedings, hurriedly rounded up, and disappeared to a prison so bad that 350 people have died of, quote-unquote, "natural causes" in the last year and a half alone. That's if you include being beat to death as natural causes. A federal judge had ordered the planes carrying those Venezuelans not to depart, or if in the air, to turn around and return. While the hearing was taking place, the administration hurriedly and unlawfully boarded these kidnapped people and just as hurriedly took off in anticipation of the order. The judge had been trying to get the facts for over two weeks while the administration stalled, finally invoking the state's secrets doctrine as the reason for not providing the so-ordered information. The federal judge called the removals, quote, "awfully frightening and incredibly troublesome," unquote. The judge also cast doubt on the Trump administration's allegation that the decision to issue a temporary restraining order and their removal risks national security, noting that the men would still be detained within the United States if they had not been deported. Because of Trump's utter failure at mass deportations, Biden blew him out of the water as far as deportations go, and he did it legally, and it pisses Trump off. Because of his failure, this celebrity showman creates these big production shows of illegally and unconstitutionally arresting anyone and everyone if they're not white without any reasonable investigation, thus no proof and no due process. What the mother fudge in hell? Is this America or Russia? Another judge said Nazis got better treatment, and I don't know how to convince you to care. In the name of humanity, say no, we will not, as a city, take part in this. Thank you. My name is Mike Herbert. I live in Manistee.
Anybody else? Mr. Campbell.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to thank Ed and the department heads for their work on the budget this year. Also, I just wanted to revisit the compensation commission recommendation. The rejection failed, so it didn't meet the 2/3 or the 5 vote, so that will be going into effect. We'll confirm with the city attorney. Also, the Housing Commission, we did get the overlays on there, and appreciate all your work, and we're looking forward to working with you on that ad hoc committee. Thank you.
Srofska. I guess I want to thank Mr. Bradford for the very nice, put-together budget. I appreciate all the work you put in.
That's it. Mr. Kowalski.
Hey, Bill, is the city going to do anything? I mean, these people are cutting the trees, and in Catholic Central Lot, they went right down the line where their warriors were. They left everything there, and my neighbors are complaining about it. I said, well, it's really on private property, so there's not much we're going to do with...
Is this the utility company doing it?
Yeah, Davies.
Yeah, I think they have a right to cut around the wires, but I can take a look at it.
On 12th, they cut them on the inside of the fence. They went down 12th, and then they went down on the west side of the school's property. And so they've got quite a lot of trees down. Most of the people would have it on the street. They're trying to get rid of it by other means. I said maybe the city would pick it up. I don't know if they'll pick them.
Yeah, they should, and I can report to them if they left some debris there, some of the wood. I'll take a look. Thank you.
Okay, and the reason, I want to just explain why. On this voting for a raise for people, a couple of years ago, when we voted, I voted no as far as the raises were concerned, and I got wholly held by people of why I would deny somebody down the road, and I would still be on the board, so it didn't matter, why I would vote no for raises. And so I voted yesterday to satisfy all those people who are yelling about it.
Ms. K.
I'm good. Thank you very much.
Ms. Reddick.
I just wanted to, again, thank the Housing Commission for their work and their presentation today. That's incredible work that you do, and thank you for sharing.
I will take a motion to adjourn.
I'd like to make that motion.